Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, March 28. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Healy's March 29, 2023 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the planning board will be conducted both in person and by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for participation by members of the public and or parties with a right or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person or may attend remotely by following the instructions on this agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. And pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, Section 20F, after notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. Any members of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listings of the agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting, and not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And per Section 241-1 of the Town Code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote at a time before the board votes on that item. Such residents will be allowed as much time as the proponents of an item is permitted to have. All right, we're all here in person, welcome. We'll get started, we do not have any Form Es this evening. So we'll move on to the minutes of March 14. Do we have a motion to approve amended, I think they're only amended once.
So moved.
Thank you Jonathan, do a second.
Second.
Thank you Malcolm, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, aye, any opposed? All right, and then I'd like to use privilege of the chair to move Barrington Brook subdivision up ahead of the zoning amendments discussion, and we've got Splice here, everyone should have gotten a packet.
Good evening, for your record, Jim Splice is here with SK Design Group. I'm here tonight to clarify and request a little modification of the covenants that are held at Barrington Brook. Currently, I did a spreadsheet, it's a little imperfect, but well, the top part kind of gives you a summary, it looks like this, I can unmute them up. What it basically tells us is that there's nine occupied residences in Phase 2 at Barrington Brook. Fifty-six percent of the project.
There are two being Threshwood.
Threshwood. Yes, thank you. There's two building permits that were released previously that have been issued but have not been acted on, and no construction activity under either of those two issued building permits. So there's five building permits that are held and seven COs held, and that's consistent with an email that I received from Chris back on December 18. So I think we all agree there. The current covenant, so the current covenant what's left is the two building permits that have been issued and expired, the five building permits that are currently held, and then seven COs. Alright, so that's what the planning board currently has as kind of a guarantee that work will get done. The request here tonight, there is a little modification here, but what we'd like to do is reissue those two building permits, not get new ones, but just transfer basically, or reissue those to two different lots. So we're not going to build on lots one and nine, we're going to build on lots 14 and 15. So we're not, I don't think that really requires a release as it relates to the guarantee because they were already released, but we didn't want to make any presumptions and we didn't want to make any modifications without asking. So I'm here to ask you permission to relinquish those two active building permits and simply move them over to two different building lots.
So you're saying that one and nine?
One and nine were issued but never acted on.
Yeah.
And I'd like to, I'd like to just not act on those, they've actually expired. And then on, there's this sketch that was included, I think yours might be. Right, so if you look at, it's four and six on there, which is in my tiny print, that's part of the the actual drawing, is lots 14 and 15, I know that's confusing, but it's the.
That's, that's the cleared lot there.
Yeah, that's right, when you first cross.
So Jim, it looks to me like one and five are the ones that were canceled.
Five is existing.
Lot five, not.
Lot five is, yeah, lot five is house nine, that three. But we had, we had a building permit issued on lot one.
Yeah, but it says in your chart here that nine is occupied.
Okay.
So it's really street number nine that is canceled.
Yeah, but I went by lot number, not house number.
Well, except number nine, you went by house number instead of lot number.
Number lot nine, well, you know.
Lot five.
Lot five, that's lot five.
Is house number one. Jimmy, you did.
Okay, fair enough.
You did say that you had nine occupied.
That's right.
You've got 10 on the sheet here.
There's nine COs issued. There's not 10.
Well, there's, I'm just telling you that maybe that's where the mistake is.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, oh, okay, you're saying on my sheet I show 10, yes, thank you.
And lot 10 is actually under construction, not occupied, I believe.
Lot 10, that's pending CO is the green box, let's just make sure I got that right. Yeah, okay, fair enough, yeah, I mean, these were originally my notes, and I figured I'd share them, I probably should know. But the point being, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out where we're headed, I have nine COs issued, I have two existing building permits that I want to move across the project, and I have seven COs held, and so I need to release a couple COs. So the, that's really the request for tonight, and my basis for asking that request is we've done, I mean, I still think there's a lot of work to be done out there, but I think a lot of work has been, has been done. You need, there's been a lot of plantings completed. A big one for me was the drainage. So we spent a lot of time, I opened up every manhole on the project, we di tested the drain line, we couldn't find one of the storm scepters, we found one that I buried, one was just not built, so we put a tree box filter into place, which is, I think, a nice way to, nice LID approach to getting that done, a low impact development approach. That, that still needs a little work, if you go out there right now, it's, the water's probably not working exactly the way it should. It ran out of season, it was late fall when we put that in, but the bulk of the work is done. There's some boulders, I can tell you all the thing's not done, I can tell you there's boulders still in the circle when we mobilize equipment next week, we're going to move those out. I know one of the neighbors is a little unhappy with some of the landscaping around the pool area, so I'll iron that out. So I need you guys to work with me and pull some permits and COs, I think that's very appropriate. I'm just asking that that number basically be, I think it's four buildings, Chris, for your record, four building permits held and four COs held. That would be, that would allow me to release the house that's built. I have a house that's completed and it just can't get a CO because of, I needed action by the board. Then I have the two houses that I'm building that I would like permission to get, transfer the permits over, but also be able to get COs for those. Those houses are modular construction, so they're, they're ordered, they're going to, that's going to happen fairly quickly. So as far as house construction goes, probably even months.
Very big ones.
Those are on, it'd be four and six on your map or lots 14 and 15, that cleared area just to your right as you enter. Kind of on the top of the.
So you want to take one and nine and move them to four and six?
Yep.
And then you want the release on 11? And that's where I'm lost now.
No, I want to release on nine, four and six.
Nine, four and six.
Be a CO.
Oh, okay.
So I, I want a permit for those two houses, I want to move the permits over, but I want to be able to get a release on them all.
Okay.
Because I think that's going to happen fast, and I think that would leave you with four building permits and four COs, and they're anxious to keep going, so I have some leverage with them in the field to get out there this spring and, you know, keep things moving in the right direction.
Does this mean that you're not going to develop in lot one?
Lot one and one A are, yes, are going to happen, yeah.
But it will happen.
Yes. There's development pressure on those right now, I guess, that's something they want to, need to come back to you. Let's, let's get this cleaned up. I'd like you to get out there and have an agreement with the neighbors, make sure I don't have to come here and have neighbors complain. I'd like to, so that means landscaping around the pool, I want the drainage fixed, I want the rocks removed, all this simple stuff that we've been talking about. You come back there with basically saying, I don't have some street trees and houses, and part of houses that aren't built, I could live with that. But other than basically that item, I feel like it should be done with everything else, so.
There are no, there are no stop signs?
Yeah, there's three signs that I have on my list that need to be installed.
And there are no street signs?
Yep, I know, that's on my list, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question about the pool, what is, what are they upset about by the pool landscaping, because I go by it.
It, it looks nice, but there's.
It looks nice, and there's, like, the trees are far enough away not to drop leaves on the pool.
I agree, there's, but there's, 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 there's been some debate back and forth about what they want, and so until I get a consensus, I've, this is the original, this is the original subdivision plan that was approved by the board many years ago, and this shows all the landscaping, you kind of see all the plantings. I don't see those plantings out there, it's all lawn, so I've got it, I know, so I've got to reconcile that with the, I mean, if the homeowner's association says they don't want it, then I may come to the planning board and say they don't want it, what do you want to do? Or they're going to put it in, those are my two choices, and I just, I don't have an answer for it at this moment. It's on my list though.
It looks like the end is in sight.
You know, I tell you. This new builder that they have doing, I mean, I'm not excited about modulators, that's just a personal opinion. But he's been very proactive, he's, you know, he calls me back, he went out there to put the rain garden in, he's, he's, he's doing what he says he's going to do. I've met him out there three times, you know, it's, that's been a big improvement for my position. I want to keep a little pressure on him, I think if we work together, that'll, that'll go well. I think you holding, you know, four permits and four COs is plenty of room to control the outcome here.
Just to clarify, I, we may already have through the building inspector's office moved those two building permits from one and nine over to four and six.
Okay.
Just, just to clarify.
Okay. Oh, good.
Yeah, I was going to ask you that, I didn't know what purview we had for.
Yeah, yeah, I think the dead ones haven't moved.
Okay, good, that's good.
So the question now, Jim, if I can clarify, so.
I'm here tonight for one, for one CO. Or for three COs.
Four and six have building permits, you would also like them to be able to be released for COs.
That's correct, yeah, four and six, and then.
What's the other CO?
The other one is number nine, or, yeah, which one, pending CO. Which one's pending CO?
Pending CO was a.
That's 11.
Lot six, number 11.
Lot six, number 11, that one they have a closing on, and that's why I'm here.
So it's. So.
Three COs.
I'm going to release those three COs.
You're moving to release the CO for lot six, lot 14, and lot 15.
Are we holding COs on specific lots or just a number?
Just the total number.
It's a total.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Follow the thought, if you do it that way, I think it's more organized, I agree, I, I think it's.
Every time another question comes up, we redo the math. Luckily, we got to the.
So the, the number is the street number, is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
And the lot, so what's better for your record, Chris, what should we reference, the street number or the lot number? Just for purposes of the motion.
I don't know both.
Okay, so then.
So I'm going to release COs for street number four, which is lot 15, and street number six, which is lot 14, and street number 11, which is lot six.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
Well, you're releasing COs on things that aren't even built yet.
Yeah, just.
We're releasing it for a CO, we're obviously not granting the CO. Right?
But we've taken.
Right.
We've taken away our purview once, once we agree to a CBO on something that's not built yet.
We are. That is correct.
And so we're giving away whatever purview we have left.
Well, we're retaining four COs though.
Yeah, four building permits.
And most of this was built without our issue, you know, voting on COs for individual houses.
So what, what do we, so we're holding the lots and the COs, right, those are the two things, not really the building permits, it's just the lots.
We're, we're releasing the lots for building permits.
Yeah.
So in this case, two of the lots have already.
But we're not releasing any lots because they're already been released.
Correct.
I mean, I think, I'm okay with releasing the lots for building, but I wouldn't suggest releasing the CBO because that's where our power is. When they've spent the money to build them, then they really need the CBO in order to sell it. So I'd say let them move ahead, but, but I wouldn't give them the CBO.
I, I don't agree with that, because I, I think they've acted on good faith, and we still have four COs that we're still holding.
There's still a lot of work to be done after, what, 15 years or something?
Standard $34,430.
My, my thought there is, is like, holding value that has a certain amount of leverage, right? So I, my personal opinion, Jonathan, although I understand your rationale, my personal opinion is that we still have substantial value being held, and that provides the leverage. And in the instance that's been explained to us, the applicant is saying that they, or what I'm hearing is that they are building these very quickly, and so that's why they would like, using the modular construction, which is why they'd like us to release the CO at the same time, so that, let's just, Splice isn't back here in three months.
I mean, hopefully they'll be back here in three months to release the next one.
I, 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 I think I'll be back here, based on the schedule I'm being told, it's, those houses are supposed to arrive in June, maybe in May, but I think I'll be back here in July. And knowing how summer goes, maybe that turns into August or September, but.
Is that why you're asking to release the CFOs, just so you don't have to come back?
I feel like everyone's on vacation in July and I might get jammed. But it's, you know, it's, it's up to you, I'll do whatever you want, it's just, it seems to me that I, unless something drastically changes, which I guess anything could happen, it's, it's about 25 years I've been working on this job. But right now, it feels like we have momentum, and the client's been acting in good faith recently. And I think if you go out there, you can see that there's been stuff done, so.
Is he pre-selling?
Yeah, he's, he's got them, well, he, he didn't want to put them on the upper sale until we had, we don't have building permits for him yet, and we're not able to close, like, he's kind of been a predicament on this, this, what is it? It's lot six, house 11. He's up against a closing on that one. So he doesn't want to be in that situation again, so he's got to, so he's got to get investment, he's put money into these houses, right, it's a big chunk because of the way they're built, so he's anxious about being able to close on.
So he's got building permits for the other ones, so he could put them on the market, right?
Yeah, he can, yeah, he can.
But he hasn't done that yet.
No, he wanted to get, I don't think he has the building permits issued, I think they're released, but as far as I know, he doesn't have them yet.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't think he has, because he's waiting for me to come here.
Okay.
Someone's got their hand raised.
Yep, it's, it's me. I won't, I won't get into why it says Housing Authority, it's absolutely unrelated to the Housing Authority, and I can't figure out how to get it changed, anyway.
It looks like Chris is helping you out.
Oh, thank you, Chris. I will be in touch to find out how you did that.
Very complicated.
I'm just a little confused. Are you saying to transfer building permits that have expired?
They, they're, they're not used, they were never fulfilled, nothing was ever enacted, or they weren't acted upon, I should say.
But our, was our part, was our part of, like, releasing the lots to be able to be built, was that a timeline?
No.
Our part is just expired, so that, that has nothing to do with us. Like, we don't really need to do anything about that.
They're still considered valid building permits.
No, no, they're expired, expire in six months.
Okay. So they can't, there's no sense transferring them, right?
I was transferring only permission to get new ones, the permission.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Which he didn't really need.
I don't think I needed, but I wanted to ask anyways, just in case, this has been a long process.
I do appreciate it being asked, because if Chris has been keeping a spreadsheet of his own that shows which have been released in the chat, and this would be a case where we'd want to move the number over, otherwise we'd want Malcolm to be amending the motion to say something about, and lot one A and B are, are, you know, revoked from having building permit.
A month, a few months ago, Chris and I spoke about this, and we just weren't sure.
Okay.
So we figured, I was covering it anyways for a CO that I might as well ask.
Okay.
And so, Randy, one, one thing that I would really like to see, I mean, I appreciate Jim's skill and honesty, but he is working for the applicant. I think that someone from the town, and it's not the planning board, because it's someone who's getting paid with professional experience, to go through and make sure that everything in the, in the documents has been done. And, and I don't think we as a board have time to do that, or the inclination to do it. And so, before we get ourselves into jam.
I'm, I'm going to come to you, just as, almost just to amend or add really to what you're saying, is I have to come to you with a Form C, or, there's a, there's a release of covenant form in your subdivision by law regulation, and I haven't signed that. So I'm going to do just what you're suggesting myself, I have to go through this project and do that. But once I do that, that would be the opportune time to go through that process.
With someone from the town.
Or, or maybe even before Jim comes back in July, because, you know, I was curious, there were a lot of stormwater controls that were proposed to be installed along the perimeter or on the south side of the property, and I go through the development from time to time, but I'm only looking at what is visible from the road. I'm not like tripping down through people's backyards to see if improvements have been installed, so I, I don't disagree with you about that at all. That's valid. All right, so we have a motion and we have a second.
So I'm just wondering what Jonathan's asking in terms of time, you know, in terms of with releasing these three, and what you're saying, that what's been shown to be completed on the list, someone in the town signing off, but, but is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I think someone from the town has to sign off.
And so is that.
On the improvements, yeah.
Before final release, you're not saying right now.
No, not right now.
Yeah, okay. Does that answer your question, Jeremy?
Yes.
Okay.
Of course, is there, you're asking for three COs?
Yes.
Is there one that you need more than the other two?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that something we can move on here and?
We already have a motion.
We've a motion.
I know, but can we do, but we're trying to do two others, right, at the same time?
Ideally, I would like three COs that would allow me to release the house, I have a closing on, I don't know, next week, it ended closing, and then the two buildings that are pending quickly.
That's house number 11, you're talking.
That's right, house number 11 is a, a sold.
So I thought maybe that one could go, go, and then the other two.
Well, because, so the applicant, so what said was the applicant doesn't want to be in this situation again that they're in with house 11, because that, this four and six will be done quick, and then they'll be up against, you know, selling it.
What's the difference between holding four and six for us?
Yeah, the same leverage, either way.
Well, no, your leverage is reduced, everyone you give away.
What Jonathan says.
It's all intents and purposes.
Once you have the building there, you have all the leverage, because they have all the money already in it. To get the money out of it.
I, I hear the argument, I'm just going to say again, like, I think the leverage should be, you know, a multiple or two of the value of the improvement, I don't, I don't feel comfortable, you know, for 10 times more than the value of the improvements, which I think if we're holding additional COs, that it's disproportionate.
When the goal is to get it all done, and to get it all done.
And get people living in it.
They need to be sold incrementally.
Yeah, as we sell them, the applicant theoretically makes money and is able to finish the improvements, so it's, it's kind of. They happen to get.
How does that work for you?
It's been sold, it happens. I'm going to get this done before I retire, yeah.
Maybe you'll get a house however, who knows? So we have a motion and a second, do we have further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, aye, any opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed because I.
Okay, understood, all right, we got that, so four, one. All right, I think that's the only action we needed to take to this.
I agree.
Okay, great, have a great evening.
Give up on me after dinner.
Yep, you're running a couple of months.
Yes, I'll be back. Don't forget to do that, I could tell. I'll stay in communication, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, Justin.
Yeah, take care.
Maybe this will be the last year.
Yeah, maybe, I've been saying that for a while.
Yeah, I know, but your list is getting smaller and smaller.
So we close the public hearing, okay, great, all right, so we'll move on to item verbally number three, number four, zoning amendment. So we closed the public hearing at the last meeting, but we did not finish our discussion revisions and voting on recommendations for town meeting, so are we?
Can we, can we post it?
Can we post the zoning text, sure?
It will soon, the chair.
Oh, yes.
Clock before you call the screen.
I, you know, I think we should take these just in the order that they are listed here on the agenda, and for co-living, just looking back at our notes, I think the most notable comment that we received, and, and I, I forgot to note it on the 14th, but we had received one written comment from Mr. Orenstein, and I don't know if that got entered into the record at that given time, it did, okay. And it was a very similar comment, as Mr. Clark gave us verbally on the 14th, about whether or not the co-living had.
It was actually sent after the hearing.
Oh, it was?
It was sent after the hearing was closed, so it's not in the record.
Okay.
Again, it's in the mail, but it's not officially.
It's not officially in the hearing record, okay, well, I think Mr. Clark's comment is, is very similar, it was the comment that was made about whether or not a parcel that is proceeding with a co-living housing could have also on it traditional housing. And I think that was one of the primary discussion points we wanted to have, is whether or not we thought the language here has enough flexibility to include that, or if we need to make any modifications, so.
I was looking at that today, and the definition says that co-living is a building or a part thereof. So it seems to me it opens it up for the building having other uses. So if we're, if we're thinking about two residential uses, I guess this allows it. Co-living combined with some other use in the building.
But it may be in a separate structure.
Right, right.
So. We can't put it up on the screen?
Yes, we could, please.
You have to give permission.
I was going to suggest a modification in the language.
Of eight, 11, which section, John?
Eight, 11.2, general.
Under general, okay.
Adding, at, at the end, adding something similar to this, saying that co-living shall not preclude other permitted uses of the property.
But are they allowed to mix?
Why not? What do you mean mix, around the same property?
Use the kitchen?
I, I just didn't think preclude was clear enough for what you're. And let's just plainly state what you want. Shall not preclude, do you want to say that other types of residential uses are also allowed?
Yeah, I think something that plain might be useful, so, because you don't want to leave it to just uses, right? You wanted it to be limited to residential?
Well, uses are what we govern, is what the zoning governs.
Right, and we're adding co-living as a residential use, right?
So the idea is you want to.
So the idea is you want to be able to mix co-living with other residential uses, and if it's in a zone where you can have, like, mixed uses, you want to be able to add co-living to other mixed uses, right? Like, so another.
Is that what you're thinking, Jonathan?
Yeah, why not?
Like on Main Street, you know, you could have co-living upstairs, but that could be a mixed use.
Yeah. Okay.
But isn't the issue with other residential uses and not with other uses, right? Because if it's mixed use.
And it's allowed. It should, yeah, it should already be, right?
But it, but are other res, I guess other residential uses are mixed use, is that what you're saying here?
No.
It's two separate things.
Mixed use says residential and another use.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, is that.
But it doesn't say it's residential.
Did you want to be able to, you want to be able to combine it in a zone where mixed use is not, right, allowed?
Which is my point, that we're not talking about other uses, we're talking about other residential uses.
Yeah, that's what I said at the beginning.
Good point.
But no, 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 that's okay. I just, I think it's good to talk it through, because the, I don't know that the intention is to have, like, a an auto body store and a co-living together, because that could be mixed, right?
But it could happen.
Well, you have an auto body store downstairs.
But yeah, what if, what if you have that weird property that already sort of exists that way?
So.
But it could happen.
In on top of a.
It could happen because we're allowing the living in, for example, the I-2, and the I-2 has mixed use by rights, but could have that.
Co-living just becomes another residential use, then you don't have to do any of that, right? Because it's already, you can already combine.
I'm just trying to get a sense of if the board really wants the co-living to be mixed with all other uses, or we want it to be able to be mixed with other styles of residential use. So I think, I think we just need to clarify that.
But how, so in the other residential uses, are they limited to what they can mix with?
Well, I think if I can, so the use table lists primary uses. You can only have one primary use per room. So if co-living was the permitted primary use, that's the only primary use you can have. A single unit residential use, as far as we know, is not customarily incidental to co-living. Therefore, it's not an accessory use to co-living. It would have to be another principal use, which you can't do. So if that makes sense, we can say that.
So could we say that co-living can exist as an accessory use for other residential uses?
I think I would almost flip it on its head, that.
Other residential uses could be
Maybe considered.
accessory used to co-living?
I mean.
Well, maybe Jonathan's suggestion gets there, so I just want to take the mixed use. So co-living as a residential use could be combined with any other non-residential use and called mixed use. Everybody with me there?
Yeah.
Whether it's an auto garage or whatever. But yeah, the problem is, can it be combined with other residential use? So maybe Jonathan's suggestion gets us there, and maybe it's.
But it doesn't, maybe, maybe we could say co-living, maybe just say other, other types of primary residential uses may be combined with co-living. Maybe that's enough authorization.
So I don't know if you mean really all other types of residential uses.
Well, other residential uses in the underlying district.
So if it ends up being.
I think that makes sense. I'm not looking at the use table, but I'm just trying to think of what other, like, which, most of the districts allow all residential uses.
Yeah, but you are two or four, or one A, you can't do multifamily, so you couldn't. You could do co-living in another house, but you can't do co-living in the multifamily.
Right, which starts to seem like absurd. Okay, but that's like another story for another day. So, John, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think if the language does something to the effect that it's a other residential uses in the underlying district, I think it'll work.
So if eight point 11.2 says second sentence, a new second sentence is added that says other residential uses as permitted by the underlying district may be combined with co-living? And that it's all subject to a site plan approval?
So.
Jonathan, does that work for you?
So I have a question, you know.
Hold up, let's just let Chris check that.
You know, and these other residential uses in these dense districts all, you know, a 40 units require a special permit, so you'd have to get one.
Do you have to get two? Like, so let's say co-living is special permit.
I was thinking it should be a second sentence, only because I would want the site plan approval to apply that into the site inclusive of the other residential, right? If the whole site would be subject to site plan approval? What do you think?
So it would be sentence number two?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
And then, and then it would be, then the co-living development would be, yeah.
I mean, it makes sense, because there's, there are restrictions here. There are protections, in other words, right? The R1A, you need, can't do multifamily, you can do it to A with a special permit. R1B, the same situation. R2, you need a special permit to do co-living, and also to do more than units.
So it's, it's good to have you read through that, because that makes me ask then, if a special permit is required in, what did you say, R1? R1A? For, so let's say it's a co-living and an eight family unit, is that subject to a special permit and a site plan approval?
Yeah.
So do we need to capture that in the site plan approval? Where we say all co-living developments shall require site plan approval in accordance with section 10.5? Should there be, and a special permit if other residential uses require? That's very model, I'm not stating very clearly.
I would say special permit to the chart.
I think it's.
Add a footnote?
Why isn't it clear?
I think, I think it's, if they're permitted by right in the underlying district.
Okay.
They're permitted, if the other uses by special permit in the underlying district.
That would trigger a special permit? You don't think we need to say anything official about that?
No.
Use tables, Dan, so I think.
I think you use tables.
Okay, is everyone comfortable with that?
I do have a question, is this gonna create a situation where we're gonna have somebody who has two primary uses? And is there some, is one gonna override the other?
This is, this is saying they can occur together. I think this gives the authority. I don't know if that creates other issues for a lender or a building permit. I don't, I don't know that.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering, if there's some side effect that we're not considering?
No.
I don't, I don't think it would be two primary uses, like, my experience, and I'd be curious, you know, from anybody else's experience, but the most intense use is the primary use, and, and the other uses become secondary to it.
Yeah. So you have accessory uses, but we don't have secondary uses.
Right, right.
But I think this probably accomplishes what, what you're looking for.
Let's try it, and if we need to tweak it next year, we'll tweak it next year.
I'm trying to understand your concern, because if you have a mixed use project, which one is really the primary use, right?
Mixed use is.
Mixed use is the primary, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's only the.
And it has its own use table entries. So if you're gonna have a commercial and housing together, it's mixed use, and it's only one use.
Right, but those uses themselves are regulated. I just, you can't do, if you have mixed use, and you're putting two uses that require a special permit, you have to be a special permit. It doesn't.
It's gonna depend on the individuals.
If mixed use is allowed by right, but one of the uses is a restaurant, that's only allowed by a special permit.
You still need that restaurant special permit. Okay, okay, we're good then.
Okay. For your comment, is that? Well, before we vote on it, we could. Any other comments, Jonathan? Yes?
Eight point 11.3.3.
My favorite topic, the bathrooms.
I, I find this very confusing, the language. So I would suggest modifying it so that in the second sentence, common bathrooms shall contain a minimum of, and strike one. And then a one water closet for up to eight occupants on the floor. One lavatory for up to eight occupants on the floor. And one bath or shower for up to eight occupants on the floor. And then add a sentence, so, and I didn't get this very, very well done, but something that additional facilities shall be provided. Some, there's gotta be language in there, so that once you get above eight, the next, if you go to nine, you gotta have two bathrooms. And if you go to 17, you gotta have three bathrooms.
Doesn't the up to take care of it?
I'm not sure it talks about.
I think this, I think this one to eight thing, I can't, I just, I have a hard time with that. I, see, and I think that the hardest time is if you're building this versus if it's something. I still think there's that tension. I think we should pass one version and then maybe take up, you know, the other version next year. Existing, pre-existing versus building new. Like, I mean, I think we should write it for building new, and then try to get all of the pre-existing in there later. Because I think if you're building new, one to eight seems really low, you know? I mean.
Like, getting back to Jonathan's.
Eight people?
I, I think Jonathan's got a good point. You know, we have to deal with multiples.
Well, that's what the every.
I, I, yeah.
But, but the way it reads is, you have to have one per eight. You have one per six, that doesn't need to code.
I think the way it reads is that for every eight, but then if you have nine, it doesn't up the ante. It has to get to eight, to 16 before it ups the ante.
Oh, jeez, I think that's wrong.
Yeah.
Right, so I, I, I think Jonathan's suggestions are good for the first, you know, we're getting rid of the for every, so one lavatory for up to eight.
You should just have the chart.
So why don't we just say, for a ninth occupant requires an additional, or each.
A ninth or a 17.
Yeah, or a 20th, 22th.
19th, 17th.
What language, really?
No, there is language that you see in code for this, and I'm trying to think of what it is.
You think one to eight, how are you gonna do that?
It's actually every eight or a fraction thereof. That's the way it would read.
Yeah, no, that's not bad.
Yeah.
But.
No, other language. I, we need to figure it out.
I can see if the housing code is one per eight.
Yeah, that's how it says it.
So.
That's where I got it from. That's where I got the eight from, Jeremy.
Well. So it's a minimum of one to eight. It says a minimum of one to eight, so maybe it does.
I'm thinking like.
By the way, Peter told me to use at least instead of a minimum, because it has fewer syllables. You all okay with that?
Yes.
Sorry, say that again?
No.
It's a change of minimum to at least.
I mean, this is, one to eight is really co-living.
I think we're only allowed to.
So that would replace a minimum of.
Yeah, that's fine.
You're rid of the of.
One water closet.
I don't know, I think two bathrooms for 16 people. I mean, if you had eight related people sharing one bathroom, that would be hell.
Well, you know what?
Now you have eight unrelated people sharing one bathroom, is that even possible?
If your builder cares about his residence, you're not gonna want.
Well, I know, that's why, but I think if we're writing it to be built, we shouldn't give them the option of having it that low, because how is that gonna work?
We've, we've been discussing this literally for months, so. Just in terms of the multiple question, so what if we add something at the end? So one additional concluding sentence that says additional lavatory facilities shall be provided for each multiple of eight?
No, it's not a multiple, but it's, it's one more than eight.
So shall be provided.
At every.
At, well, but it's at a multiple of eight for each additional occupant beyond. Right?
Yeah.
That's confusing to me.
So I'm not sure that every isn't the word there. We use the word at least.
Why don't you just do the chart? Just do one through eight, one.
Because every.
Nine through 16, two. You know, I mean, it's not gonna be that big.
Up to, limited to eight.
Yeah.
And if we have at least in there.
But if you have, but if you have just one extra, you still have to provide a bathroom.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to say.
So if we say for every eight occupants.
Beyond.
That, that implies that you need eight more. And it really is one is the trigger.
Right, I realize that, it's not one toilet for three people.
What that language is.
It's one.
There'll be eight toilets, and then for every, every other eight, there'll be one.
Is that how it's written?
Yeah.
What?
Could you say?
Say, what are you?
I was just explaining to him that, because he kept saying that there's one toilet for eight people, and I was explaining that it's not. That for the first eight people, you have one toilet each, and then there's one for an additional.
Oh, I don't read it.
Yeah.
One for each additional person, or one for each additional, eight, additional eight.
Right.
So it's, so it's eight toilets up to eight?
No, no, one.
It's one toilet for eight. Do we, we need a diagram?
See, that's why.
One toilet.
I think we should just have a chart.
Eight little stick figures.
I think we should just have a chart.
Two toilets equals six little stick figures.
Why don't you just have, like, one occupant, one toilet, two occupants, one. I think the chart is just the most obvious thing. Like, don't put people, because people are gonna miscount the people.
Additional facilities shall be provided as per.
Why, we could order on the.
No, it's just one bathroom for one people.
What, what, Pedro, does, does the building code have language that you can?
If this is it.
Same.
And they don't talk about, once you hit nine?
No. This is annoying.
Is it just, is it assumed then, one for every eight? I mean, I think, is that why eight is the, or every is the right word?
The building code is probably the least perfect document.
Oh, I wanna know what's familiar.
We should bring Matt in here and see how he interprets that, because it's really up to him.
So why did you not, like, every, because I'm starting to think we should go back to every? What, where did you feel like it was weak?
Because that implies that you need eight to get there. But, but. One person.
Right, Jonathan's right. For every additional person in multiples of eight, that doesn't work either.
Obviously, if there's one person on the floor without a bathroom, they need a common.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's, that's obvious, I think.
Well.
Yeah, but if there's.
Yeah, what about the ninth person?
That's what we're trying to do, I think.
Right.
It's not the first person, it's the.
It's just, how do you say that?
And if you say one water closet for every eight occupants, does that mean that you have to wait until you get to 16 before you have a second?
That's what it means.
And I wonder if occupant is right, because.
Units.
You could have singles or you could have eight doubles.
I think people, I think people.
I think people is.
Yeah, but that can change.
Yeah, I mean, you could have one, a, a unit that has one person and then a next month it has three people.
This is supposed to be easy, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, we're trying to establish a minimum standard here for somebody who would kind of attend.
Could you just tie it to the housing or building code, after the first sentence, just. I think. Prescribed by the housing or building code. And. But the, the thing is, is that, well, the thing is that the building code is a regularly co-living, or even congregate living to this degree. This came from. I believe. So there's no, there's no place to link it. I think somehow that like we need, you know, somebody who, who's, who is with the language to be able to. Might just, why don't we just say it, just write, write it down the way, what we wanted to say, and then we can, at least we'll have something up there and then we can pare it down from that.
The next nine is figured by, next eight is figured by the first, by number nine?
Yeah.
Beyond eight occupants. Additional facility shall be provided. At the ratio.
For sure.
Here. I'm just gonna write it down and play with it, print it down.
Well, you could say, but just to, to pick it back, you could say beyond eight, beyond eight occupants. One additional. Will be required for, for every additional eight.
For each additional one. Of eight.
Beyond eight, one additional will be required. At a multiple of what?
Yeah, but you don't have to get, you don't have to have eight occupants to trigger the second bathroom, you just have to have one.
I wish I could remember my.
For each, the occupants or fractions thereof, one additional facility shall be provided.
Thinking you're talking about a fraction of an occupant.
For, for each.
Or fraction thereof, is that?
Can we, can we say that?
And you can't have any of the toilets.
We say that for, uh, occupancy, occupancy numbers greater than eight, the ratio of one to eight will be retained. Will be, yeah.
I like that.
For, um, occupancies greater than eight. Uh, the ratio of one to eight shall be retained.
I think I'd wait until the second eight is. You, you don't want the ratio to go bigger than one to eight?
No, they, this is a minimum. So they could, I mean, uh, a responsible developer, I think, would have one to four, or one to three.
But, but the minimum is.
So you wanna say a minimum ratio of one to eight?
Because, because you want two to nine.
Yeah.
Which is, which is, right, which is a, a smaller ratio. Than one to eight?
No, because if you have nine and you only have one, then you're not, you're not keeping a ratio.
Well, no, but you didn't know.
And if you have seventeen and you only have two bathrooms, then you're not, then the ratio is.
You don't want the ratio to, you want the ratio to only go in one direction.
We have to vote on it.
So is it a greater ratio would be one to nine, or that's a smaller ratio?
Well, I don't understand the question.
Because you want it to be, you want it to be good, one to eight, then you want it to be two to nine, right?
No, what I, what I want is if you divide anything by.
I think this works.
You come up with.
We can, we can let it marinate, but we do need to vote on it, right, and if we decide we need to amend it on the floor. It will be like the most, um, like esoteric amendment we've ever had, right?
You can explain.
But, but, I think this.
Have to go back.
Do we wanna qualify the one, one lavatory to eight?
To build.
One lavatory to eight occupants.
Well, it's actually the whole thing.
With that, water closets, I don't, maybe I'm misunderstanding that, because that to me just says the same thing, one to eight, you have one lavatory.
Right.
But if you have nine, that's not one to eight, that's.
It would be two to nine.
If you have, if you have nine, then your ratio of one to eight is not, is, is exceeding.
For every eight occupants. No, because that's what you wanna make sure at the ninth one, yeah.
Two to nine is.
It's a ratio of one to eight.
And if, 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 if every occupant above, above eight requires one toilet. Or every occupancy above eight, or every project above eight.
Well, because you want it to be, you want it to be one to one, one to two.
Okay, I'm gonna call timeout on this. I, I think you need to, to, uh, go with this language, I think your intent is obviously clear. And you need to move on, otherwise you will certainly be.
I think we should have a table.
Move on, Jonathan, do you have anything else? Please no more ratios.
I do, in the.
Parking, are we left with parking issues?
No. In the use table.
Okay.
Why are we requiring a special permit in the R two and the R four?
Well, let's see, if I recall correct.
Windflower is in the R two.
I, I understand, but they have a special permit.
Yeah, so we have that.
So I think we had that conversation, but I believe we also had a conversation around, um. The availability of, of, um, central facilities for those parcels. And I think we also had some discussion previously around, um, concerns that, um. Other residents in those areas may have for, um, uh, co-living.
But.
Larger scale type co-living development. I'm just trying to refresh your memory on the conversation.
Practical co-living really has to. Has to have town water and sewer.
Agreed, and we said the R two and R four generally don't.
I understand, but. You know, what if they did?
Well, then, then they need one with a special permit, but we don't want somebody going in by right where there's not. Down sewer wall.
Well, you'd have to have the world's largest septic system.
What is worth, was it worth consideration, you don't have any other. Large, multi-unit type residential development allowed by right of the R two and R four, this shouldn't be treated anything, it should have a special permit.
And, and I do think we went and did like a side-by-side comparison with the other residential uses, and we were trying to kind of match the co-living to it. And we had the conversation about wind power, for instance, and, and we said, well, they've already got a special permit, so it's not as if it's penalizing them. I think we leave it. What else do you have?
Under the by right. Housing.
Well, so, uh, yeah, I'd like, so are you done with co-living, does anyone else, let's stick with co-living, because I'd like.
Yeah. Right, I think the I for co-living should be a special permit, select one special permit, to be consistent with other, um, uses for the I zone.
I don't remember the discussion around this with the I zone.
The I allows two and three dwelling by right.
Yeah, maybe that.
I allows what, by right?
Two and three. Two and three units?
Um, actually, we, we have a misprint, I think, in the by right housing section, but we'll get to that.
No, no, it's, it's in our bylaws now.
Yeah, I know, but if you look down in the, uh, proposed changes.
So we will, we will set that aside, but.
But I will, I will say this about the, uh, um, dwelling two and three units being by right, because I think last year we did.
Are you in by right housing? I wanna just.
I am not in by right housing, I'm in co-living, and I'm explaining why the, uh, uh, I should be an SB. And it should be an SB because, um, for the same reason. That last year we made all those Ys for, uh, across the board for, uh, um, two and three units last year. Uh, which I think was a mistake, we didn't look at it in context and see that it was the only housing. That was allowed in the I by right, I think that's wrong. Uh, and I think it would be wrong to do it again this year for the, uh, co-living in the I zone.
Um, so similar to the R two and R four, you're suggesting that the I for co-living be a, a select word. I don't, I think your rationale doesn't sound unreasonable, I'm just trying to remember if we had other discussion on that. Just in terms of consistency. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I think you know how I feel about the I zone.
Yeah, that's, that's a different discussion.
Yeah, agreed, um, all right, will you please make that change, Chris, to the I? For select, select word special permit for co-living? Anything else on co-living? No?
No, I think it's pretty good.
Okay, so there is, um, no more discussion on co-living. Um, we've got our revisions, um, I would entertain a motion to recommend this, um. By law change, uh, for co-living residential development at town meeting.
Um, second.
Okay, we have that moved by Jeremy and seconded by Malcolm, if there's any further discussion online? Or is this your last chance for discussion online? Nope, anybody online? Nope. Uh, okay, we'll vote, all in favor, aye, any votes? All right, great, well done. All right, can we talk about landscape trees, that's super easy, or? Oh, yeah, there's.
Can you put that up, Chris?
I did say in order, and that's the order they are here, I see our packets are in and out of order.
Oh, is there raised trees actually?
It's, it's fine, it doesn't matter, by right housing's in your packet, so by right housing, so, uh.
I think there's an error in this.
Under mixed use, we were gonna go with select.
Well, we need, we need to put a Y under. Two and three family. On all those.
Yeah.
So, uh, for.
For all the zones.
Yeah, the Y is missing.
The Y is missing from the I zone?
All of them.
Oh. But I is a.
It's only there for the I two.
Okay, I see.
So. For all zones, for rows two and rows three, there should be Ys.
But that's already.
No, there is, there is no R, there. Row three is actually two, two, you, two rows, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And, and row two currently has a Y for the I zone. Yeah. So the question is, are we gonna change, are we gonna change that, and I think we should, but I don't know if we can, because.
Can we do that now, because we didn't, that wasn't part of our thing, right?
Well, it's on this, it's on this document.
Oh, I see.
Do you think regulation, Malcolm, is what?
The existing, uh, bylaw has Ys in every zone. For, uh, for, uh, two and three units.
All right, so, I, I mean, we're not changing anything.
But we.
Yes.
I mean, I think that's wrong, but, uh, that's the way it is.
Well, that's the way it is only good, Chris, yeah.
Yeah.
The I is now a yes, it's not, because we're not crossing out a select word, I think.
Thank you, yeah, I was.
So that's not a change, that's just, uh, an edit to this page to, to reflect the actual condition, okay? Um, so I had a note.
In, in the, uh, mixed, mixed use.
All right.
Do we want the planning board to be the SVG?
No.
I do, but.
I, I think we do, but we're recognizing that's a difficult battle for.
So how do we, how do we address this?
I think that's one of the agenda items later on, I wanna have a discussion about it.
Okay, yeah. So, mixed use, uh, row seven, Chris, under I, it should be SB not PB.
It's the way it is currently.
Yeah.
It is SB?
Yes.
So it's no change?
No, it's a Y, actually, isn't it? It's a Y.
I think we just.
Apparently it is?
Yeah.
Well, if it is, then leave it a Y then.
Yeah, it's a Y.
So then just leave it.
Yeah. Yeah, but he.
It's available online.
Yeah, there we go.
Well, I know that. But I have a hard copy. Just didn't get updated the last time.
Here we go.
Just used to hand up papers.
You don't get a paper.
Year, used to replace them.
Yeah, those these last.
No, 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 after it's been approved by the AG, Chris used to get his packets to fix our hard copy. But not last year.
So just to be clear. Row seven for mixed use is currently. Um, no for the R zones. It's currently yes for the B and the HVC. It's currently SB for the B one, B two, and B two A, and we are suggesting the change to Y. For the B one and the B two, right? And then for the B two X through the I two, it is currently Y. So we're not proposing any changes there, is that correct?
Right, just the change on the two, the B one and the B two.
So it's just the B one and B two changes, okay, good, and then for. For multi-unit. We're proposing, do we have that? Correct now?
Yeah, we're proposing changing, uh, B and HVC and B two from.
So we've got, B will be a Y and a Y for, for B. For unit and nine or more unit, both will be Y, and then HVC both will be Y. And then for B one, we'll have. A Y for four to eight. And then for B two, we'll have a Y. For B two, for nine units, right, and then what are we doing for B two?
For nine units for B two, we're changing it, oh, yeah, we are.
To a Y, right?
Right, sorry.
And then no changes to that B two A. And then for the B two X, for nine or more, we're changing to a Y.
Yep.
No change for the B three, and then for the MXD. Uh, nine or more is being changed to a Y. And then for the I, we're changing both to select word, special permit. And for the I two, we're changing both to a Y. Yes? All right. I don't think there's any other changes we can make, so we'll move to make a recommendation for this zoning item to town board?
So.
Or town leader?
A positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, we're getting further discussion. Any comments from the public? Uh, there's no public comment. Okay, um, all in favor? Any votes? Excellent, well done, trees. There were no public comments on the proposed tree language, so if we do not have any comments, I'll entertain a motion. To make class of recommendation town meeting for, um, the, uh, landscaping and trees amendment. Thank you, Jeremy, and we have a second by Malcolm. Uh, any discussion? Any discussion in the public? Okay, all in favor? Okay. You guys are on a roll, okay, the next one is the citizens petition, um, we've received some, um. Some analysis from Chris on some technical provisions of the citizens petition. That are, um, irregular, I guess, is the right way to say that? Um, I think our options are to adopt it as our own or to leave it as a citizens pa- petition. Um, my personal feeling is to leave it as a citizens petition and let them shepherd it through the process.
So, do we have to, uh, endorse it or not endorse it? Or can we just leave it?
I think we can make a recommendation, right?
Yeah.
Do we have to make work?
So it doesn't have to be our petition, but we can make a recommendation on it.
So, Chris's point, at one point you said that MXD was not across the street?
Yes, it's Caddy corner.
Not directly across the street.
But it is. We look at the map.
MXD is across the railroad tracks, Caddy corner, it is not directly across the street.
Like the southwest corner and the northeast corner would be across from one other, one another on the diagonal.
Diagonal, or diagonal.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not following, I'm sorry.
Um.
Unless, no, the railroad tracks on the north side of Silver Street is R1A.
No, so where is the problem? Right there?
Oh, 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 I hear you.
It's the one that's over here. Oh, it's all the way over there.
So are we clear on where the proposed zoning is? Yes, okay.
So is it?
Uh, and, are we all in agreement that we'll leave this, um, as citizens article?
Yes.
And do we wanna make a positive recommendation for it? Or no recommendation, or?
All there needs to be is a report to town meeting, whatever action, take or don't take, it needs to be reported.
Okay.
I would support it.
Um, I'm, I'm not entirely comfortable with it because it, it MXD includes, uh, mixed use and commercial by right.
I think if we can't be unanimous, I'd rather we not take any position on it.
Well, that's okay. And then we can support it in a lot of the.
And we can all support it individually or make our own individual, um, you know, statements or commitments to it. Um, alright, so we will, we need a motion to forward the citizens, um, article to town meeting. Um.
I mean.
So moved by Pedro, seconded by Jeremy. Any further discussion? Uh, any comment with something? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any votes? Alright.
The report you'll read will just reflect the.
Mm-hmm. Neutral, the planning for this needs to hold the matters.
No one.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Wow, okay. Chris, I'll give you a moment to catch up, but do you have a template or?
The only thing for template I have to report is, uh, at, at your next meeting, uh, I just kinda wanna prep you that staff is looking at, uh, fees at townwide for all sorts of things, and we probably recommend increasing fees to cover the costs of, you know, what we need to do. So for example, special permits, uh, right now the fee is 300, that barely covers the advertising cost. Not to mention the costs of mailing out notices to others, approach for the hearing and then after decision is made. So, uh, staff's reviewing all fees for all applications and will probably recommend increases. So, most fees are set by the select board, but some are set by you, some are set by zoning boards, some. Um, so at the next meeting, I'll bring to you, I think, a recommendation for certain revisions to the fees. I believe most of the fees can be set just at a regular meeting of the board. Subdivision keys have to be set at a public hearing to amend the subdivision regulations. Um, but anyway, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that and I'll try and prepare and everything for the next meeting.
If the fees go up, can the secretaries' fee go up?
Can we couple it with a wage increase?
Okay, thank you.
We can do that.
What is our, um, April meeting so far? Do you have any insights into that?
April well, eleven. Uh, well, four May is probably the continued site plan review for the, uh, proposed expansion at the Timberland Heights.
Timberland.
Okay.
Home, uh, they, they may be through their special permit phase with the select board by then, so if they are, then the 11 could likely be the date that they're back to you.
Mm-hmm.
So one four May, special, one on-site plan review and these can just.
Okay, okay.
For discussion.
Um, alright, so out of the board and subcommittee issues and concerns, we'll add, um, master plan update because we wanna circle back to that.
I, I want to.
Um, yeah, so Chris, you're done on town planner's report. We can move to board and subcommittee updates, uh, issues and concerns. Jeremy, you look like you're gonna pop, so.
Yes, I hadn't, just from the last time, the, so I guess the housing subcommittee, select board, prime board, housing subcommittee, related to that, can we put it on the agenda so we can talk about possibly having a planning board subcommittee, a housing subcommittee? Like, just planning board?
Sure, um, let's put it on the agenda for April 11th, um. I would like some feedback on what the objective and like goal would be, because I'm, I just, I have concerns with creating committees and subcommittees with like no mission, and it just is like extra meetings and what are we doing and um, what's the intention, how long this should last, and do we need the subcommittee to work through a particular issue? You know, and you probably have some thoughts there.
Yeah, but maybe if we, anyone that's interested could bring their thoughts.
Of course.
Of what? Because I definitely have things that I think.
Do you have a little vision you wanna outline at, at present, just to get folks?
Well, no, because I think other members might have some strong ideas. I mean, I, I was interested in continuing some of the work we were doing in the joint one, or the, I guess it's not the joint one, the planning board, select board, housing subcommittee.
Mm-hmm.
Which I don't know, I think that one might be puttering out.
Mm-hmm.
Without a meeting. Um, and so I don't wanna, I wanna keep going.
Mm-hmm.
Without like having a long break to restart.
Um, okay, if, if.
Because I feel like there's, there's some things that, like, I, we had talked about sending there, so for instance, meeting with, um, developers and getting their ideas of where the, you know, and, yeah, I mean, there's still a lot of that that I'd like to see, and we didn't wanna see it here, so. And I don't know, we don't really have the time.
Let's, let's have a discussion about it. I mean, I just would want to have us have, if we're gonna take the time to create a subcommittee that we're, you know, it's got an objective and we're getting like deliverables out of it, and they turn into action items that the board can move on, right? Okay. Yes, Jackie.
Can I ask some flesh to the, the announcement that we're gonna be talking about the master?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so what I, I wanted to get this back on the agenda because I'd like to look at some of our deadlines regarding the homework that you guys all have. But, um, so basically, I'd like to see at the next meeting that we discuss the planning board's actions or strategies. Listed, I'm reading this, listed in the 2013 master plans implementation table that we determined back on 10, 12, 23 that were not in progress but relevant, so that we pulled out about nine items that we really wanted to revisit and see if they're actionable. So it was like they were, there's a, put a pin put in that. Also, I'd like to re, review ports at that, reports at that time, from your outreach to the other town boards, commissions, and committees regarding the status of their tasks as outlined in the master plan. So if we can actually start talking about this, because we've kicked the can down the road, and if we have time at this meeting, I think it'd be very helpful to, you don't have to have it finished, but we need to be talking about it and pull it together and at least submit something on paper. And then we'll go, we'll discuss it, because otherwise I'm worried that we're gonna get past, and it'll dissipate, and you'll forget what took place. So anyway, um, that's what I'd like to see discussed next on the 11th.
Uh, maybe we can plan to have our spreadsheets, um, that Malcolm had, uh, put together for us.
No, I have.
Oh, she's got a.
I have, I have sent that to everybody twice.
Oh, okay.
Along with what specifically on your, but I'm going to rewrite it in red and shorten it, so you guys will all get it.
And send it again.
Send it again.
More threatening color.
Jackie, you have one? I, I sent you.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I have.
Okay, good.
But I was, I thought you were gonna build it out, but that's good. You got, you were good.
If you want more, I'll, I can come up with more.
No, but the idea here is to, when we get, um, we move on, we have a better sense of what was happening in the committees, and I mean, I know it's interesting to know. I found it interesting to realize that when I contacted one of my assignments, they didn't know about it. And when they heard about it, they got really excited and they said, oh, we can actually do that. And I said, actually, it's written in the master plan that that was something you're gonna do. So that was, it's interesting. So I think that's important information to have, and see what we can do to make sure of that.
And recognizing some committees and commissions have not been able to meet or have been non-responsive, I, I think it's time we can just move on. I mean.
I think we have to put a pin on it and stop it at that point, because that's where we are. But I, um, I think it's, it's, it's fascinating, and also we're gonna be talking to the community about some of this, and we wanna be able to talk about this, things that have been done, and celebrate that, but also look at, you know, reprioritize.
Okay, thank you. We brought it on the agenda. Pedro, anything for you?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, I just wanna give you guys a, a, a story about a property that's in the I zone on North Queen Road, that was slated to become a gravel pit. And instead, they, um, it, it was purchased by Jean Aradale, and she is partnering with the Schumacher Center to build a farmstead there. So I just wanted to point to, pointed out that we have these industrial zones in the middle of these residential neighborhoods. And here was one that was going to be turned into a, an abusive use in front of a bunch of houses and very close to mine. So just wanna point it out, just to make you guys aware.
Was there, was there an actual plan that put it?
Yeah.
Is that off the salt one?
A current.
Can you speak up?
Current, what you mean? Or, or 30 years ago?
No, recently.
Really?
This is why Jean moved on.
And Bill Nolan?
I don't know.
Which doesn't matter.
The other thing is, I mentioned last meeting that VRPC is gonna have a fifth Thursday. I sent you guys the
Yeah.
The message, and I confirmed with Chris that if anybody wants to go to the fifth Thursday meeting, uh, that's, the subject for the meeting would be microtransit, and that the planning board has some budget so that we could all go if you wanted to attend microtransit.
It's not gonna be a dinner. It's gonna be like it used to be, it's gonna be hors d'oeuvres and then a cash bar. And, uh, Fred, uh, somebody's gonna be there in Franklin County talking about their, uh, microtransit system, which is, uh, very robust. And, uh, it seems to be a hot topic for, for us, for our town actually, so.
So what's the date of that?
It's the fifth Thursday, so it's next Thursday.
On May.
May.
No, May, I'm sorry, it's the Thursday, there's no, it's the Thursday.
I was gonna say it's tonight and we missed it.
Anything else for you, Pedro?
No, that's it.
I think to, to add to microtransit, they should add ambulance service. The state doesn't fund ambulance service.
State funds buses, I'll tell you that.
But that's interesting.
That's amazing.
That is interesting. Okay, um, I don't think, I don't know. I'm not sure how you couple the two, because the level of service that you need out of an ambulance is gonna be much higher than you need out of microtransit, right?
They have similar challenges.
Yeah, I think in a rural community, we've got all sorts of challenges related to transportation. Um, alright, um, is that your board issue or concern, Jonathan, or did you have something more?
Uh, I'm not sure I have a board issue or concern.
Okay, Malcolm, anything for you?
Uh, no, I was gonna mention the fifth Thursday, so.
Okay, Jeremy, did you have something else?
So yeah, so CPC is meeting next week Tuesday, um, uh, the second of April at five o'clock, um, doing our normal thing before town meeting, but also, um, uh, I think we're gonna get a report from, no, from the House, from the trust?
I know.
No.
That'll be it.
We didn't, we didn't invite them, okay. Um. Well, good, because I, I had something come up, so I'm not sure if I'm gonna be there. After I said, yes, I'm available.
Okay, alright, um, and what is the date of that meeting that may, is, so it's, the date's subject to change?
Well, no, 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 we're, we're meeting, right? We're meeting, so we're just doing our getting ready for town meeting? Is that the only thing I'm gonna be on the agenda, Chris, or are we also doing the possible?
There's some projects to review.
Oh, there are projects to review, okay.
You can just post.
I just wanted to add that, um, that the, the VRPC fifth Thursday is open to the public, not just for board managers.
Okay, yeah.
It's just we have a night in our budget too.
Alright, um, and then, um, if, if there's nothing else, just briefly, um, I wanted to circle back with this group um, about process, um, because I think coming out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Select Board um, housing project, we collectively got some frustration about process and um, I would like us to think about if there is a different approach that we could recommend moving forward and try and change the process, because I mean, clearly, we want to see housing be developed in the town and where land is scarce. We have been big advocates for increasing density. So how can we better communicate that? Um, and engage maybe more through the process, um, to try and encourage that. And I, I think we probably are recognizing that we can't control it, we can be part of it, can we be a more constructive part of it? Um, and so I had sent folks an email just expressing my own frustration about the process. Um, but I think just getting mad about it is not constructive, and I'd like us to think about, you know, maybe we sit down with select board and we have a debrief on how the process went. Decisions have been made, we're moving on, but how can we look at the process and, and improve it? Um, and so I would welcome input there. I have been thinking of maybe just penning a draft letter to the select board. Um, we, I think we also need to communicate with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, um, and be available also as a resource, um, for planning and, um, advising on, um, land use development. Uh, but I, I think what we've realized is we need to be engaged really early, uh, because when we're trying to redesign things at the end, it's just frustrating for everybody because we're without options at that point. So, um.
So we're, we're, we're talking about specifically the, with the planning unit residential development. Because that's the process we just went through, and that's, and the process proved to be problematic, so that.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's one, one area.
You know, I think that the, the process was problematic because there were already agreements in place in terms of the density of that property that we didn't, we weren't part of. And we didn't take into consideration when we had our, um, review of the special permit request.
Which is where I'm saying we need to maybe engage earlier.
Early.
Correct.
Um, see, I, but I don't see this as a density issue. I see this as a flaw with that bylaw. The, by the, the way that the bylaw is written is flawed, and I think there's some aspects of the bylaw itself that are flawed.
Well, then we should look at that, yeah. But, uh, you know, I.
This is why I wanna have this discussion, so, because, you know, I, I, to sit and be frustrated is not a great feeling, um, so. If we're gonna go through it again, how could it be better? If it's, I mean, honestly, I'm not happy with the purge either, and I almost feel like just, what value does it have?
Well, if you get a, if you get a purge, it can look nice, but we just solved some of it, right? I mean, that's the issue.
It shows there's a loophole in the herd, basically.
Well, there's just not language.
It's all VSGA.
It's not specific enough. I mean, that's. Your, your question's interesting, the weakest to me is, the open space residential development is the one that's irrelevant, and I would love to see this appear. The purge has potential, but, but I think there needs to be some design guidelines in there to guide people as to what exactly we need. For example, there's a recommendation in there that, uh, units be a certain distance apart. It's only a recommendation. I think if, for example, we change that to, um, to, uh, make it a, a mandatory distance between units, that will completely change the way these things are designed.
And parking.
And then as far as the process goes, I mean, that the, the approval of the definitive plan has to be present at the select board when they're reviewing the definitive plan, and then the planning board should be there too. It should be either a joint meeting or maybe it should just be a recommendation. It should be either a joint meeting, or maybe it should just be a recommendation from the select board, and we review it here. As a, as a special permit.
That's what it should be.
So, I mean, it sounds to me like we should. Take up um open space residential development and P U D. Um in our next round of zoning, but I think we, I would like us to lay some groundwork for why we want to do that. And what the intentions and the objectives are, because I, I don't think, and maybe Jonathan, you've got actual memory on this, but I, I don't. Think the intentions of either the O S R D or the P U D were to. Have a conventional subdivision in the end, right?
Well, the P U D goes back decades, beautiful job, so, for the intent. And the language is pretty substantially the same as what it was.
What, and so it's, it's, it's in need of freshening, probably.
What I hear, what I have heard from this board is you will all possibly collectively, but certainly individually, have your own ideas. Of what good design is. In a P U D or an O S R D. In a quote-unquote cluster versus a typical subdivision. And if you have those hot ideas, you should put them down, otherwise, it doesn't matter what comes in front of you, you'll be frustrated. So if you have ideas, you should, as Pedro suggests, try to encode them. And town meeting agrees, then you have a working bylaw.
Um now, the, the complaints that you're hearing, are they? Gov- on the government side, or is the community saying this, is it a larger set of concerns? About not understanding the process or not being satisfied with the process, is it?
I think. I personally am not satisfied with the process, so I don't, I won't speak for everybody else, so. Um the, the way certain design and layout. Aspects of that particular application were basically locked into place before the planning board thought. Um I don't personally. Think that design by community is really going to be an effective means of doing it, you're gonna ask.
I'm, I'm asking this just because when you were describing what use, you know, we can be more precise with the rules and regs that we write. That go into the zoning bylaws. And that's like, okay, that's one language that we can use, but then there's a, I'm, I'm going to go back to visualization issues here. Because I'm thinking of general public or not the well-informed, those who are. Put off by the language of the zoning bylaws, because it's like, I'm reading. You know, something that goes back, you read this and go back, and it's really complicated. So if, you know, the vis- I thought Peter in his article most. In the edge, when he's talking about nineteen seventies designs versus nineteen fifties designs. Traditional. Standard approaches to subdivisions. Versus clustering, I thought it would be so helpful just to see that. I mean, we all can think of, of um. All sorts of level town, et cetera, et cetera, but. Just I, I'm big on showing. And I think that's. You know, people might not want to admit that they can't read the plan, or they can't understand this, or it's too complicated, so there's a whole nother level to the. It's not designing by committee, but sharing the ideas that you have, that you think is what we shouldn't be doing.
We don't have a very graphically strong code that has a lot of imagery in it, but. Chris, you've even mentioned this to us before, that there are different forms of zoning code that do have a much higher graphic level to them, and so. I think the, the only one I can think of in our code now is about how to figure height. Right, uh it's always a little roof line, and so how do you measure for height, that's about the only one, just because a picture can be worth it, though.
Yeah, Chris did that.
But I also saw something that New York City's housing. Department put out that was visualizing what could be done with housing and high rises, and does that work? Or how do you find affordable housing, and how do you build it, or? And it was graphic.
Yeah.
And you could move it through, and you could understand it, and.
So that may be something we want to think about.
That's money, that's a lot of.
No, there's lots of good planning documents that you can, you know, you just, you give attribution to. You know, University of Massachusetts, the school planning. Wait, there is some, there is somebody over your mask that's like, he's like the cluster guy, right? I just can't think of a name right now, but anyway.
Cluster guys, I feel much better already.
But I, but we need, I, I, other communities, I have little graphics in their code that demonstrate, like. What does a cluster subdivision look like, and what do we mean?
Maybe it might move online.
Alright, okay, so um let's plan to take those items up for the coming year. Um alright, anything else on that topic? Alright, uh do we have any citizens who wish to speak? Anybody online? Alright, hearing none, we will adjourn at seven thirty-five.